Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Franklin Education Board of Education meeting for February 19th, 2025. The meeting has been properly posted. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
Mrs. Yank.
Here.
Mr. Sprague.
Here.
Dr. Beer.
Here.
Mrs. Sapursky.
Here.
Dr. Khan.
Here.
We are all present.
Thank you. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? The Robinwood students are going to help us.
Lead the way.
Please lead the way. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Looking for motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Witkowski, seconded by Dr. Khan. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Robinwood Elementary Presentation. Dr. Beer, please.
Hi, I'm pleased to introduce a group of enthusiastic and very well-prepared representatives from Robinwood Elementary School, led by Principal Lydia Sessing. I've been delighted to get to know Robinwood's new principal over the past several months, and I am confident that she will continue to grow Robinwood's already exemplary record. Indeed, her mid-year report to me a couple days ago showed that Robinwood is already meeting some of its school improvement team goals in several academic areas. Tonight, we will hear a presentation on student-driven approach to working toward Robinwood's student and family engagement goals. Please join me in welcoming Robinwood Elementary School.
Come on on.
Oh my god, oh, that's right.
Okay, some of the kids did print their slides, so they're more prepared.
That's good.
So I do want to talk about our engagement goals. So we're gonna, we do have a very student-driven, very exciting presentation for you all. But our engagement goals this year were all surrounded by the same focus. So we're really, really focusing on improving social-emotional learning for all and all stakeholders. So we're looking families, we're looking students, we're looking staff. And really, our work this year has been grounded in a lot of SEL resources for staff and families. So we've done a lot with the Zones of Regulation, we've done a lot with restorative practices, we've done some empathy interviews with families, we've had some additional surveys to collect some data, we have a monthly SEL blurb in our newsletter to kind of focus on some of that work so that we're making those connections. Our students, we're making sure to commit time to teach those strategies while focusing on the students' individual strengths. We did a survey at the beginning of the year for our students about some of their strengths, and that includes community circles, restorative conversations, we have a new recess roundup, and we have assemblies around the SEL themes. The reason why actually we want to spotlight today our Student Council is because thinking about all of these pieces and thinking about social-emotional learning and strengths of students and being inclusive, and they've been really working on empathy with one another and practicing those things. We wanted to revamp Student Council to include all interested 4th and 5th graders. So in this new Student Council, students get a voice in how we plan for these goals. They also get to support in ways that are their strengths. So we have three teachers that are helping to lead the Student Council. So I will introduce kind of Ms. Celeste. She is one that is really, really working hard to revamp, as well as our other two teachers, Ms. Rad and Ms. Reinders. But Mrs. Celeste is going to kind of talk to you a little bit more about what that revamped Student Council looks like, and then the good stuff begins, because then we're going to let the kids kind of show you what it looks like.
Yeah, so this is our, most of our students for Student Council. There are some students who were absent the day of pictures. But as a 5th grade teacher, I had a lot of students who approached me when they found out I was going to help out with Student Council. And when talking to them, there was a lot of apprehension around it, because when they were in 4th grade, we used the voting system. And there were some students who weren't voted in, so they struggled with the wanting to participate this year, but being a little worried that they were going to go through the same thing as last year. So with that in mind, we revamped it, so it was a come-one, come-all. Any 4th grade and 5th grade student who was interested, as long as they could show that they were following leadership expectations and behavior expectations, and their teachers could agree, were welcome to be part of Student Council. In the beginning, students had to fill out a survey regarding their own personal behaviors to make sure they were following and modeling behaviors. They had to get that signed off by their parents and their teacher to make sure we were really showcasing the leadership side of things. When students joined, we introduced what was called four subcommittees. So when students said they were interested, we were at about 30 students who were interested. By the time we then introduced, it was a come-one, come-all, we had 40 students who wanted to be a part of it. And I am proud to say, all the 40 of those students have stuck with it. So we've had students who have stayed in it. We have those four subcommittees: school improvement, videos, student announcements, and assemblies. Each subcommittee has specific tasks that they have. The students chose which subcommittee they were interested in, based on characteristics and responsibilities in each of those. I'm going to let the students just show you guys what each committee is made up of and some of the things that they're in charge of, but it really allowed us to have smaller, more intimate conversations and everyone getting a say, really focusing on those SEL goals and inclusion goals where students could showcase their strengths and be able to use them in their committees and getting jobs done to help make our school a better place. So I want to introduce, for our first committee, we have the School Improvement Committee, and part of the School Improvement Committee will be shared by Rudy and Harlow, two of our 5th graders.
Our mission is to welcome new students, plan spirit weeks, and have a voice in improving our school. Some of the things we have done so far this year are...
Veterans Day Spirit Week. Our committee has picked out themes for each day, like Hero Day. We got to dress up like our hero and who we believe in. We also got to make and hang posters around the school about our Spirit Week.
We also decorated the Robinwood Holiday Tree, which is an annual tradition celebrating Robinwood families and their diverse cultures with a tree decorated with donated ornaments.
Student Council bulletin board with monthly events. This month, the theme is kindness. It showcases all the hard work we have put into the school this year, and we will continue to update.
We also helped organize the Hope House donation, which we are doing this year. Each morning, we collect the donated items, and we count each of them, and we report back to Mrs. Reinders.
Good job, guys. Thank you.
All right. Our next committee is the Video Committee, and that is going to be presented by Isla.
Our mission is students plan the videos, we write our own script, we practice and do all of the filming ourselves. Some of the videos we've done this year are, is a Veterans Day video. The video is to teach students what Veterans Day is and to thank all veterans for their service. We have also made roar videos. The video is to create and teach all Robinwood students about the roaring expectations in the lunchroom, hallways, bathroom, and playground. We plan to do more future projects for all future, future all-school assemblies. Here's a clip of our Veterans Day video.
Today is a very honorable day for some students. We, the members of Student Council, Student Committee, are going to be teaching you about this honorable day, so we're going to be learning about Veterans Day.
I'm Harper.
I'm Cora.
I'm Elise.
I'm Derswana.
I'm Abby.
I'm Cora.
I'm Gwen.
And I'm Valerie.
A veteran is a person who is serving in the military or a person who has been in the military. A veteran is also a person who is discharged or released there from the different branches of the military.
Veterans Day is a day where you honor the people who have served in the military and worked in armed forces. Veterans Day is also a day to remember the people that died fighting for the freedom of our country. In the military, there are lots of different groups of people who have different jobs in the military, like the Air Force, Army, Navy SEAL, Marines, and many more.
Veterans Day is important because it helps veterans see that we appreciate the fact that they are willing to sacrifice their love, their life, for our country.
Knock, knock.
Who's there?
Veterans.
Veteran who?
Veterans Day.
Knock, knock. Who's there?
Mila.
Mila who?
Military.
Do you want to know how veterans are important to Robinwood?
Veterans are important to Robinwood because we wouldn't be a free state without them.
These veterans worked hard to provide forever in our Robinwood.
That's why veterans are so important to Robinwood, because there are veterans in almost all of the kids of Robinwood's families.
Now we're going to talk about how veterans, what veterans mean to us.
Veterans to me are people who love our country and fight to make our country a better place.
A veteran to me is someone who sacrificed their parts of their life to help our country, so I'm really thankful for them.
We've told you what a veteran is to us, but what is a veteran to you?
They helped our country become a better country.
And they provided for many families in America.
If you have a veteran in your family, be thankful for them, and they've all been done for your family.
Now that everyone knows what a veteran does and is, we'd like to give our thanks to the veterans.
Thank you so much for everything you do for our family, we really appreciate it.
Every day, the veterans risk their lives for our country, fighting wars and defending us from harm.
Thank you for becoming veterans to keep our country safe.
You can show your appreciation by...
Making cards for the veterans.
Learning and teaching others about Veterans Day.
You can even make videos like this to show your appreciation to the veterans.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the Video Committee actually created their own scripts for it. They chose what they want to say, they did their own little research for any extra information, and they handled the iPads going around to the classrooms to ask other students to say "thank you," and then helped us put it all together. Our next committee is the School Announcements Committee, and that is going to be presented by Reticka and Arshika.
The first thing we do in the Announcement Committee is daily announcements. In daily announcements, we announce the date, the lunch choice, the pledge, and remind the mail carriers to pick up the mail.
We also do B1 Wednesday messages. The messages are usually informative challenges. We write the messages on themes from the Staff-Student Engagement Team, like gratitude, kindness, sharing, roaring behaviors, and much more.
The last thing we do is Friday Funnies. We say three jokes every Friday that are found and selected by us students in the committee, and we have a joke for you. Did you hear about the cat who tried out for the basketball team?
No.
Wait, he didn't make it, he had too many hairballs.
And then our last committee to hear from is the Student Assembly Committee, and that is going to be presented by Harper and Tristan.
Students lead the songs and chants for each student-led assembly. Roar songs and chants.
Oh, boy. All right, here we go. It's all happening.
One, two, three, four, ah! Oh! Hey! Ah! Ah, oh, hey, ah, ah, let's roar!
Thanks.
Students deliver the messages of the themed assembly. This includes writing scripts, making sure to include all members, and making slides or visuals for the whole school.
Some themes we have done so far this year are Veterans Day and Kindness.
So really, to wrap up, and I did, I do want to share that I had to update these slides just before coming here today, because they wanted to add those borders for you guys, because they worked really hard on this, right? We worked so hard on this, they want to showcase, this is their new board that they're creating to showcase all the things that they do every month. And this month, they already have 69 items donated for the Hope House, and we just had our assembly yesterday, or yes, yesterday, to kick off the Hope House donations. They're working with their buddy classrooms to pay kindness forward this month, and we just, we even had a surprise visitor of Captain Kindness yesterday. So if you don't know who Captain Kindness is, I couldn't get him to come tonight to the board meeting, but maybe someday. But we're just so proud of our Robinwood Student Council and everything that they're doing here to make Robinwood just a great place, and they are so passionate and so dedicated, and they care so much, and they did such a good job that we're just so proud. They give up their recess time, that's when they're doing these things. You know, even today, they came in during recess because they wanted to have one final time to practice, and you know, we were like, um, okay, we'll see how we can make it work. So we're just very, very proud of them, and we wanted to show them off to all of you. So congratulations, Student Council.
Thank you very much. Kids and teachers as well should come up here for a picture, please.
All right, everybody, we line up and turn to this little banner here, so switch all the way. The badges in the back? Although Harlow, you're going to tell too. You guys are going to have to switch. All right, we'll switch in. He'll switch. Get close, everybody. All 40 did want to come. Yeah, I got it. You imagine. Ready? Good smiling. Thank you for having us. Thank you for coming in. Thank you for being excellent Student Council representative. I think they're all the same, so no worries. Good job. Thanks for the excellent preparation. Who hasn't gotten theirs? You?
Thank you, everyone. You should feel welcome to stay, but you also don't need to.
Was there somebody who was supposed to be here? Yes.
Not required.
Taking their drums and running. Yeah, Ms. Sessing mentioned that they, that every member of the Student Council wanted to present, every member, and so they had to draw names.
I agree. There are some ways that are really energetic, so it's fun that they did that part.
As for you.
As everybody's walking out, we'll move on to Community Comment. I don't think anybody signed up for Community Comment tonight, but if anybody cares to, they're welcome to.
Doesn't look like it.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to the Consent Agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Sapursky, seconded by Mrs. Yank. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. School Board Calendar. There is a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, March 5th, 2025, at the ECC at 6:00, and we need to talk about it in a second. WASB Day at the Capitol, Wednesday, March 12th, 2025, at Manona Terrace and the State Capitol, and regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, March 19th, 2025, at the ECC, also at 6:00. We will move on in a second, but...
Quick question. So tomorrow night's event is not posted, then, or?
It's posted. It's just not on this agenda for the Chamber Dinner.
Okay.
Thanks, Linda. The Chamber Dinner is tomorrow, and I don't know who's going. I think Mrs. Larson and Dr. Khan, myself, are going. It is posted as a meeting on the...
I'll be going.
Oh, and you're going to. Thank you. So we will be, we will be getting to item, item D and E. Item E will be an action item tonight because of what we'll talk about later. We'd like to do it before the 15th, and we can't do that, the administration can't do that work, or we'll have trouble doing that work. It's possible that there's going to be a government shutdown, which brings us back to the March 5th meeting. There's nothing currently on the agenda for that meeting. So I'm looking, it's quite possible that we won't need to have that meeting on the 5th, we'll only have a meeting on the 19th in March. So if everybody's okay with that...
Are we removing it at this point, or are we waiting to? We're canceling it right now?
Well...
Would, if we already have it on the calendar and we already have, I'm sure everybody's calendars are cleared, would it be beneficial to have it as like a board workshop night or something?
We tried to get a board workshop scheduled for that night with the person we're engaging with to talk about what we've been, one of our goals this year is to move the board together on terms of our relationship, I guess we'll say. So we've been engaging with somebody, I've been engaging with somebody, and he cannot, he cannot do the 5th. So we are trying for another evening.
So if there's nothing on the agenda, do you foresee anything being added to it?
We do not, no. And we looked ahead at the meetings after that, too, to see is there something to shift back, because we put a lot of effort in this year to evening out meetings, and there's some meetings with more heavier content going into the spring, but nothing that's ready to be moved up or timing-wise, just doesn't work to be March 5th. So yeah, we don't see anything, and the one thing that Mike was referencing is defeasance is on the agenda tonight, and our, and you'll talk more about it when we get to that item, but our advisors are hoping that we can pass that this evening, take action on it, because if there is a government shutdown, pushing it out to approve on the 5th wouldn't give them enough time to try to get that through before potential shutdown on, I believe, the 14th is when that could potentially happen. So that was the only thing that would have hung out there, but if we could take action on that tonight because of the potential shutdown and listening to our advisors, then there's nothing on the March 5th meeting.
Okay, so let's just sort of wait and see how this meeting goes, and then we can decide on the March 5th meeting. Does that sound right?
I think that sounds good.
I would be in favor of keeping the meeting on the books and finding a way to do some type of board development.
I would support that.
I just, we already have it on our schedule, it's been on our calendars for a year. I feel like we should use the time that we have, and even if we can't have a facilitator come, maybe we have some sort of retreat, just, I don't know exactly what it would look like, but I don't, I feel like it's a gift to have a night with nothing pressing, and I think that we could benefit from spending time together and working towards those goals. We might be more prepared for your person, whoever that is. We might be more prepared for that if we get together before it, so.
Good point.
That's just my thought. I'm happy to hear what other people think.
I'd support that. It's on the calendar.
Okay.
For now, it's on the calendar. Thank you. District Administrator update. Mrs. Bennen, please.
All right, good evening. Thank you to Robinwood for being here. I know they've all cleared out now, but if you ever get an opportunity to go to their assemblies, their drumming and the spirit that takes place in that gymnasium is always really exciting and uplifting, so it was really nice to see that display tonight. Franklin Forward Updates. Our team continues to meet on a weekly basis, working through the schematic phase, which we talked about when Cadence Consulting was with us in January. In the recent District Newsletter, Franklin Find, the Opening Doors, the Franklin Focal Point, we pushed out a QR code to gain either written or audio/video feedback on around a couple questions that will help the design team look and move from schematic to design work for the facility. So we've had a really good, I would say, in my opinion, a really good turnout on that, so 257 responses, and it's just been out there for about a week and a half or so. So community members, we've had 21, community member and alumni, so people identifying as alumnis, but 54, parents, 49, high school students, 76, middle school students, 57, and just alumni that maybe don't live in the area but are on some of our mailers yet, 32. So we're going to start now pulling those together and using, finding some of the themes in there to share with the team as they go through the design phase. So that's the next phase taking place there. The core design, the core team also met with Mayor Nelson and our City Inspector Justin about a week and a half ago to start talking about, you know, what are all the pieces that we need to have in place, how can we proactively continue to build this positive partnership with the city as we work on developing that land and that building. So we connected again today to get some of those meetings on the schedule with Kelly, our City Administrator, so we're looking forward to that. A few of you were at the construction to completion ribbon cutting of our house last Saturday, so that's the sixth build, which is a really exciting celebration for our community and our students. We had a diverse group of students that worked to complete that home this year, and we're excited and proud of the partnership with Tim O'Brien Homes, but also Andrew Menti and his leadership in that. If you're looking for things to do, we have a number of things in the next two weeks on our calendar, which is really exciting. So this Saturday is the Jazz Cabaret at the High School, and we believe that starts at 5:00. So it's dinner and enjoying the musical talents of our own students and our educators. On Thursday, February 27th, it's Fine Arts Night at the High School, but that is the whole district, so it's 5:30 to 7:30, display of wonderful artwork from all-age artists across the district. Saw some of it on my visit to Pleasant View yesterday. So you'll be in for quite a delight, and it's, you can drop in and see that and interact with a lot of the students, which is really neat. Friday, February 28th, we don't have any students, so this isn't really an activity to come out to, but we do have professional development with our staff. We continue to hold our Gear Up Sessions where our staff gets some choice and where they want to learn and grow, aligned to our coherence plan, and it's our third year of doing this, and we continue to have very positive feedback on it and have grown the options that we can offer to our staff. So we have a session, some new ones this time, which Dr. Moke talked even more about, with some information just about different cultures in our community, more diving into service if we want to do that, and looking forward to those things. Saturday, March 1st, we have the Improvised Broadway Show at 7:00 PM. So this year, we've started the Saber Center Performing Arts Series, so this is the third show in that, in those opportunities. And then March 13th through 15th is our high school play, The Addams Family. So it starts on a Thursday evening, runs through Sunday afternoon. What's really neat when they do the plays, they bring the 8th graders over also on Friday so that they get an environment of being in the Saber Center, seeing a play, understanding not just what it means to be in performing arts from the student's perspective, because they usually do a little talkback at the back end of it, but also for some of the students, it may be their first time, if they're newer to the district, that they've been to the Performing Arts Center. If they've been here their whole career, they've obviously been to the center other times because they've done trips in 5th grade. And that's what's going on in the district, so lots of opportunities to engage and get out there with our families. Any questions, let me know.
Thank you. Reports, presentations, other board business, Academic Excellence Scholarship Recipient Approvals and Technical Excellence Scholarship Recipient Approvals. Mr. Volo, please.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm confident some of those members of the class of 2032 that we saw will be on this list in a handful of years, so I'm excited. I'll have to get those names from Lydia to make sure I keep a close eye on them as they progress. But this is one of the greatest things we get to do every year, so after, you know, all these semesters of work, our current seniors in the class of 25 have earned recognition as either a Technical or Academic Excellence Scholar, and per statute and policy, we have to approve their recognition. So after this, you'll notice some other things get pushed out through some announcements, recognizing our tech excellence and academic excellence scholars in newsletters, socials, that sort of thing as well. So this is the step that lets us formally take that.
I move that we approve the Academic Excellence Scholars as presented.
Motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Witkowski. Motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Wickowski. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Wait. I move that we approve the technical excellence scholars as presented.
Second.
Motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Sapursky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Recreation Staffing Update. Mr. Gomez, please.
Welcome back as an actual employee.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for having me today. What brings me here today, I think the former director told me that I only come up here about one time a year, so I'm early. So what brings me here tonight is a, kind of just want to share with you a lot of, I hate to say changes. I don't like that word. Sometimes when you say change, staff freaks out. So it's more of being adaptable to growth that we are seeing in our district. So I'm here tonight to share with you some of, not the change, but the change of how we want to keep up with the growth that we're seeing come across the district. So I know you got the prepared report in front of you tonight. However, I just want to start with a prepared statement. So again, good evening, board members. As you know, the approval of the new recreation center is a significant step forward for our community, providing much needed space and expanded recreation programs. The center is slated to open in late two thousand and twenty-five. And with that, we need to ensure our department has the staffing to support the increased demand for programs and services. Currently, many of our programs have waitlists and were limited in offering due to space constraints. While we're, while we're in the process of restructuring our department to balance workloads, we still require additional support to manage the increased demands of both current and future programs. To meet this need, one of our immediate solutions would be to hire an entry level recreation coordinator. This position is crucial for us to effectively manage the expanded program in the new recreation center and to ensure we're ready for future growth outlined in the referendum. The referendum promised additional facilities and our department will be responsible for managing these spaces as they come online. This new position will help us expand existing programs, create new opportunities and introduce more daytime senior programs. All while alleviating staff burnout. By adding this role, we can continue to provide high quality service and meet both current and future community needs. It's crucial step to ensure that the recreation coordinator is not just a position we need for today, but an investment in the future of our department, the success of the new recreation center and the long-term wellbeing of our community. This addition will set us up for success, help us meet current needs and position us to continue growing and thriving. I thank you all for your time and attention today. I sincerely appreciate you and hope for your support as we move forward with the restructure of our department and the addition of the new recreation coordinator. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Linda, please.
So I'm assuming this is a full-time position?
Yes.
Is it in the budget currently? Will it be in the budget and is it going to be supported with program revenue or what will be the funding source?
I'm going to lean to Andy Cromie on that one. I know we discussed about bringing that position on board for twenty-five.
So we are going to be bringing an updated tax levy. I don't have it. I would love, I, I will, when I bring it in April, I will have kind of a spreadsheet to show you what it is. But essentially it's taking our permanent rec employees, so Matt, Leah, Danny, and putting them in there and saying our salary and benefits are going, this is going to be our tax levy. And then we have a couple of other components. We have a new software coming online. We have the ability to transition utility cost out of Fund Ten into Fund Eighty. We're into recreation. Andy Daniels and I are working on that particular component. Essentially saying all of these are what it takes to operate recreation. Taking, again, it's a lot easier if there's a diagram. But taking, if we are plus, so we're in the black for a fiscal year, we'll subtract whatever we're, the difference of from that amount is necessary. But essentially generating what is necessary to run Fund Eighty outside of generating any revenues for programming. Is essentially what we would look to move the tax levy to. So this would be supported as part of our tax levy overall.
I think, can you compare that to how we've traditionally settled on our Fund Eighty levy in the past?
I would like to provide some insight into how that levy was settled upon. That number was kind of handed to me initially. In my very first year, it was six hundred forty-two thousand. In working with Brad, like we couldn't get anything short of about six hundred eighty-two thousand, I think is what we settled on somewhere in that particular year. But in working with Brad, there wasn't necessarily any rhyme or reason to it. So what we're trying to provide, and this really started with a conversation with Brad about a year ago and then with Matt coming on board, kind of carrying it forward, but ultimately setting, what, what is our rec tax levy for? Specifically laying it out. So we're laying it out with permanent employees, utility costs, and the only other real fixed cost we have is the management software, which does both scheduling and housing all of recreation payments. So essentially the portal as our fixed costs, eliminating any overages. So if we run over in any particular year, if we're positive in any particular year, there's not a necessary reason to keep building a fund balance. There needs to be some fund balance, like any fund, but it's not necessary to just keep building it up. So kind of offsetting it with any overages we have in any particular year.
So sort of stepping away from using accruing, accruingly large fund balance as a way to save for future needs?
Yeah, I, we would come back to something like if we had future needs, it's possible the CIRC building needs to expand at some point. We would come back with the rationale of why we would need to it. And then if we were to prove that, we would just add that to a tax levy in a year or two years or whatever it is to cover it, but not necessarily just accruing dollars to just accrue them because we can. I don't think that's necessarily the right thing to do. Yes, Linda?
So then what about, I think maintenance has always been part of, of the, how do you, how would you treat maintenance?
So maintenance of what?
The new CIRC buildings, is that part of the fixed cost?
So at some point, that, that is not part of the fixed cost. So that building will be brand new right when it's up online. Probably not going to have a whole lot of issues, but at some point, the roof is going to need to be replaced on that. We would bring that forward as part of our ten-year plan, breaking it out as the CIRC building with the anticipation that we would levy in those particular years. Or it's possible that roof is probably going to cost three hundred thousand dollar, well, twenty years from now it won't be three hundred, but today it'd be about three hundred thousand dollars probably. So we could bring that forward like three years ahead of time and say, we'd like to levy a hundred thousand dollars this year, a hundred thousand, next year, a hundred thousand, year three, for the purchase of that roof in three years. To kind of smooth out the cost of that over time or just come and say, we'd like to levy three hundred thousand dollars. We'll need a roof replacement next year for those particular items. So that's really kind of the long-term plan of how to hand, how we plan to handle maintenance on the building.
And then how would you, how are you tracking programming, revenue versus programming cost? I'm assuming the goal is that the fees support the cost. Is that our policy?
So we track it directly to the program itself. So for instance, Matt's salary and benefits don't get tracked to a program. There's nothing that Matt is supporting specifically. He's not running yoga class or he's not running soccer. So nothing is tracked to him, but soccer revenue is tracked to soccer expenses. So.
They always match?
They don't always match, no, but the codes match. So we know when we have fifty soccer registrations and we are paying, I don't know, six or seven people to run the soccer program or whatever it is they're doing. Those things are all coded the same. Ideally, revenues are covering the costs for those programs. And it's part of Matt's job or Matt's team's job to evaluate if programs are running efficiently enough to cover their costs. But I will say it doesn't always line up dollar for dollar. Revenues don't always match. Expenses or expenses don't always match revenues.
Well, I guess that's where I would kind of expect you to keep that in the fund so that a good year offsets a bad year. Instead of making, what if you're, you're short in that fund? Does the general fund make it whole? Or do you, you talk about no fund balance kept in?
Not talking about no fund balance. Talk about not accruing more fund balance. So again, I have this all out in the spreadsheet that I don't have ready for today. But essentially what we would look to keep is about fifty percent of our expenses in fund balance. And that will fluctuate. So if a million dollars is the expense today, we would look to keep about five hundred thousand dollars. If next year it's one point one million dollars, we would look to move that fund balance to five hundred fifty thousand. If the following year we only spent a million dollars, we would look to reduce that fund balance down to five hundred thousand. So it's going to be some fluctuation with that. It's going to depend on programming. So as Matt grows programming, our expenses will go up because we'll have more people taking classes. So we're paying more people to run classes and things like that. So there will be some fluctuation with it. But the idea is that we're not just accumulating and accumulating and accumulating and all of a sudden we have four or five million dollars sitting in a fund balance when we don't need four or five million dollars for anything in particular. If we would like to add on to the building, we would come to the school board and say, we have this need, we would like to do this and gain approval. Or you would say, nope, we don't think it's the right time to do that. And we would abide by it that time. But to just build dollars doesn't make sense in that particular fund.
So then, is that a lot, so go back and forth between the general fund and Fund Eighty?
You cannot transfer dollars from the general fund to Fund Eighty or from Fund Eighty to the general fund.
So then where is this fund balance being moved around? You said in a good year?
It just fluctuates inside of Fund Eighty. Just fluctuates inside of recreation.
You'd budget for a lower.
It's like a, it's like a savings account, right? So.
So it's staying in Fund Eighty?
It has to stay in Fund Eighty. It cannot move anywhere.
Okay.
Don't levy as much.
Okay. It's, I thought I heard you saying at the end of the year, we'll transfer it for.
So we'll go back to the example. We spent a million dollars. We would like to keep five hundred thousand or fifty percent in the fund balance. If our fund balance is six hundred thousand dollars, we would say, well, we can reduce that by a hundred thousand dollars. So if all of Matt's staff is nine hundred thousand dollars and we would request nine hundred thousand dollars on tax levy, we'd reduce that by the one hundred thousand dollars we're over in fund balance and say, well, we really only need eight hundred thousand dollars to operate next year. We'll use a hundred thousand dollars of fund balance to offset that. That'll put us right back at fifty percent of our expenses.
I believe it's kind of covering what you were asking, Linda, because you were saying like, what if you have a bad year and you don't have enough in the account? What Andy's talking about is what we are keeping in the account to kind of be that cushion, but adjusting it off of what are we seeing on a year-to-year basis in this spending?
Okay. We'll see how it goes. And are you, I'm really kind of interested in how the before and after school program performs. So you can tell us that, how much revenue we take in versus how much that costs us, right? You, you can do it by program.
Yep, hundred percent. I don't have those numbers off. Yes, we track that by school. And I know Matt's instituting a new plan to move instead of a kind of a week by week. So parents right now sign up by week. Moving that to a monthly process, which allow, it's much easier on budgeting because it's much easier on staffing. So we can plan for the revenues a little bit easier because a parent is signing up for twenty days in that month, right? Four days or five days a week by four weeks. Matt's staffing for the entire month. So it's a little bit easier than month or week to week where it's fluctuating up and down. Or we're overstaffed in this particular week because we just didn't have enough students sign up. And now we have three after-school supervisors, but we only have fifteen kids versus, we know we, twenty kids are signed up. We're going to staff it at two for the entire month.
Yeah, please.
Um, are, where do our community custodians, and I believe we have a community nurse assigned through the rec department, are they part of the fixed cost or how does that?
Yep. So they will be part of the fixed cost. So we currently have a, a staff member, community, or a custodian at Forest Park. We have two custodians at the high school. They essentially, they work a different Monday through Friday schedule. They work to cover weekend hours. We have many community events happening in those particular buildings all the times. We have a groundskeeper that runs out of recreation as well. So they're maintaining grass for the district for essentially groups that are using it rent-free, right? So Franklin Youth Football, what I run, we use the high school, but we don't pay to practice there. But grass needs to be cut, needs to be lined. Our groundskeeper is doing that. Matt's soccer programming running at Robinwood. Again, they're not paying for that. It's part of the rec program, but we're using the grass over there. Needs to be cut. So we have a groundskeeper. Our district nurse also handles kind of our school things, but community as well, and is really working with the, the city to understand more of the community health and making sure that we're following all those protocols to be as safe as we can possibly be. So all of those will fall under the fixed cost as well. So there's a list of ten or eleven people inside of that list. As part of staffing, Andy Daniels has calculated we'll need approximately a point five FTE for the CIRC building in custodial services as well. So that individual will be doing cleaning, no schedule set, but either early morning or after programming happens in the evening. So that, again, falls under that fixed cost piece, right? So we want lots of people using that, but again, studio floor needs to be cleaned. So people doing yoga aren't looking at dust everywhere as they're doing whatever it is on the floor.
And anybody else?
Yes.
Please.
So I guess I'm wondering where this new position though is really involved in those recreational programs or there would be fees involved? That's what you're really expanding? Why that would be a fixed cost? Why wouldn't that be part of the covered with fees and programs?
Because they're a, a large scale overseeing lots of programming. So it's not necessarily they're going to be tied to soccer or tied to basketball. They're going to be overseeing all of these people that are running those programs. And ultimately trying to keep fees accessible to as many people as possible is one of the goals of the recreation program, at least as I understand it. And so the more we raise fees, the less opportunity there are for families to be involved in that. So it's part of being conscious towards that as well. So trying to, essentially what Brad has set up and Matt has taken over is we want basketball to pay for basketball. We, we want soccer to play for soccer. We want before and after-school care to pay for before and after-school care as close as we can. Ideally, all of those are making money, but we're not looking to balance the entire recreation program on the backs of basketball and soccer and the fees associated with that. So it, my understanding is those fees are designed to run the programs so that we can get as many participants as possible. We make it accessible to as many people as possible within that. And we know we subsidize with the tax levies. So the idea is to try to continue to do that, but be a little bit more efficient with our tax levy so that we're not necessarily balancing it on the backs of those things. So we can keep our fees at a reasonable level, again, to provide accessibility to as many people as possible.
I'm just wondering if you, is this going to be a lot different than what we had before? I mean, is levy going up a hundred thousand plus or?
It probably will be in year one as we try to level set this. But I would guess it's going to go up a few hundred thousand dollars, but overall, our levy will probably go down next year. Given we're not paying for a CIRC building. We've already established what the debt levy is roughly with this fall levy. So as you know, we levied an additional four point four million or something into the CIRC building this year.
I was just asking about the CIRC, the recreation program, not the overall levy. Because it's levied separate.
Yeah. Well, it's part of the overall levy. So yes, we would anticipate levy to go up, but we will bring that all for your approval in, or to get kind of your feedback in April and then we'll go from there.
It will go up from pre-CIRC building level?
Correct.
But it'll go down from CIRC building level?
Oh, a hundred percent significantly, yes.
And when it goes up from pre-CIRC building level, it's because of that one position?
No. Again, we're trying to take all of these full-time positions that aren't supporting a specific program. They are supporting recreation in its entirety. And putting that under the umbrella, it's really defining what the tax levy is for. Because right now I don't have a specific. It's a number. Six hundred eighty-four thousand, seven hundred fifteen dollars or whatever it is. It's just a number that was pulled out of thin air to help balance in any particular year.
It had some concepts though, in terms of.
That I'm aware of? No. It was a number that was pulled out to balance and maintained.
I think you could spend some effort in recreating what that might have been. I mean, I hope we're not just wiping the slate clean and starting over. Sounds like kind of what you're doing.
Hundred percent. We're coming up with a definition for it, yes.
Okay. Could we, when you bring that back in April, could you have the listed positions then?
Yeah, yep. We'll have it all laid out.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to add a few things about the restructure thing. And if you kind of flip over on a, a prepared report that we have and it kind of breaks it down, but let me just give you, I've been in this business for twenty-five plus years. My last, my previous stop before this was in a city of about eighty-eight thousand people. And I'll tell you what, Franklin here, we're offering double the programs of what that was. And we have doubled the staff down there. And we're seeing where I came from. When I took this position, I, in the, my interview, I was told to look at the program guide and to see what I thought about it. I was like, wow, these are a lot of offerings. So I walked into my staff of four. And again, doing my history and research, this board passed the circ building based off of expanding programs. So we got to keep in mind that that was our main focus of not just to reshuffle the deck, but to bring more programming into the area. Currently, my four full-time staff members, one of them splits between recreation and facility, which they do all the facility rentals and usage and coordinating, that they spend about seventy percent of their time currently, plus thirty-two programs that they're running under their belt. I got another staff coordinator in recreation that had about twenty-eight programs under them. And then I got my two coordinators, a manager of the before-and-after-school, and then a coordinator assistant that helps in the full-time after-school programs. They had about three or four programs under them with their programs being year-round. That's a lot of programs. Where I came from, I was a center director, which also ran the day-to-day operations off of a center, and my max operational programming was fifteen. These people are stretched pretty thin, I was very surprised. And we got to remember, we have over seventy programs here in Franklin that we offer, and they're not just offered once. They're offered three to four times per guide, and that's most of the programs. Again, history of this department, from what I've seen, it used to be six people staff, plus a secretary. There's a secretary for over twenty-some years in this department, that's gone as well. So you got to remember that our staff is also doing their work from start to finish. They're not handing anything over to be emailed, they're passing anything over to a secretary. We all take turns answering the phone throughout the day as well to help people and register them. And so that's, again, you got to remember that we're doing our work from start to finish with no in-between. And now you're talking about bringing a new recreation center in, someone's got to run the day-to-day operation of that center. Now, we don't have a principal in the building, like we have schools and custodians and stuff like that. So again, that's going to fall back on our recreation staff. And then with the referendum, we got more facilities that my facilities person is going to be in charge of. So I think I'm being fiscally responsible by asking for that position. You know, I could do it the other way and ask for a full-time facilities person, but I think that would cost us more by moving the scale up and promoting within, and then in the back end, hiring that entry-level position. But it's needed, we're thin, the staff is dedicated, but they're ready as well to bring in more programming and new programming, but we need help.
That's really good perspective, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, in, in the past, we had, I know, swimming, and that was, you know, a lot of, lot of community members have expressed interest if possible, because I think that was more affordable.
Yes.
Innovative, it has become more expensive. So is there any plan to get the swimming back for the community members?
Uh, swimming, when I used to work in the swimming programs where I used to come from, and then talking to Brad here currently, it just traditionally, I think we went to Germantown, one of our PDs, and the first thing out of the swimming person's mouth too is those are cash cows, we usually don't make money in swimming. You're talking about, we did swim lessons and we would have to hire lifeguards, and then we would have to keep them trained with Red Cross. And so a lot of the training and uptake of just having staff, we, you usually don't make money, we usually lose money. So I think currently how we have it is we kind of work with an outside swimming organization, and they kind of handle the lessons, and they kind of get like fifteen, twenty percent off by using our recreation guide. But again, we could always explore that when the new pool comes and see where we're at at that time, but I just know from experience and hearing from the previous directors, we lost money at the end of the day at offering those swim lessons because of all the training and that goes into keeping up lifeguards. And there's a shortage of lifeguards, as you know, these days.
Thank you.
Thank you, anybody else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, resolution providing for the sale of not to exceed one hundred forty-five million dollars. General Obligation School Facility Improvement Bonds, Series Twenty Twenty Five A. Mr. Cromer, please.
Yep, so first I'd like to introduce Jeff Sealy. Jeff is our financial advisor with Ellers. This resolution is coming before you tonight in direct relation to the referendum passed in November, and is one of the requirements for us proceed with a sale of one hundred forty-five million dollars in bonds, which go, again, goes directly with the question asked in November as the dollar amount.
Thank you, it's a pleasure to be here. Congratulations on the passage of your bond election, that is fantastic. And now we enter into the phase of financing it or selling the bond, so you can go ahead with the project, the construction phase, of course. So tonight you have a set sale resolution, which sets the sale of the upcoming bond. And we, you should have what we call a pre-sale report that was in, in your agenda. So I'm going to hit some of the highlights of that pre-sale report, which is going to cover some of the details and the timing. So of course, it's a hundred and forty-five million associated with the passage of your November bond election. This bond is going to be paid over a twenty-year period. There is a limit on a bond of twenty years, so you can't exceed that. If you wanted to go more, you would have to split the bond and so forth, those are all options that we looked at as we went into this. In order to mitigate the little bit of the tax impact, we put in an October twenty-twenty-five payment and switched it to April after that, in twenty-six and beyond, that gave you twenty-one years of tax levies on a twenty-year bond. So it's spread it out, tax impact out one more year, which brought it into the target range. We had that target range of point-eight mils, eighty dollars on a hundred thousand dollar value. We will be going through a rating process, right now you have a Moody's rating of a double-A two. That process is upcoming. We'll be doing a competitive bid sale, so we'll be advertising it nationally and collecting bids from underwriters all over the United States. Most of those bids come in from the Midwest, the East Coast, get very few West Coast underwriters bidding on them. And the timeline is, of course, tonight you have your set sale resolution. Before we sell it, we'll be going through the rating process, we'll be putting together the official statement, that's the document that the investors, or potential investors get to find out all the details about your district. On March nineteenth, we'll be taking bids in the morning, and then I'll be coming back to your board meeting that evening with the results of the bids. You will be adopting an award resolution, which awards a sale to the winning bid. And then on April tenth, that's called the closing date, that is when the bond proceeds will be transferred, and you have control of them, and you can start spending the money. So taking a look at this, I have some schedules in there, these are all preliminary, of course, they're going to change on the day of the sale because when the bidders, every bidder's going to have a little different structure to it. But that is March nineteenth, as I mentioned. We already established the tax levy, because of course, you, when you adopted your levy for the, this twenty, for twenty-twenty-five, you, for debt payments, you levy for the calendar year. So since we had that October payment coming up, in October of twenty-four, when you adopted your levy, we established a levy of five million four hundred ninety-six thousand, that put it at that point-eight mils. And so that's already out there and available. So when we sell the bonds, we're going to match the payment to that levy for that first year, because that's what you have and that's what we need to match. And then we're going to level, level it off at your total tax, debt service tax rate of about two point six. We're going to level, level it off, and we expect a little bit of a dip in it in twenty-thirty-six. At that point, you know, if, if, if you have any capital needs or so forth, it's always an opportunity to look at that when you have a dip in your tax rate. So that is the, a summary of the bond process for a hundred and forty-five million.
I just have a question for my own edification. When you, when underwriters are bidding on this one, what, what are they actually bidding? Like what, you know, like when I'm bidding to buy a, a car, I'm proposing a dollar amount, what do they actually include in their bid?
They're going to include everything from their compensation called an underwriter discount. They'll include a premium, everything is selling at a premium nowadays, given the structure. And they're going to include the coupon rates or the interest rate of every maturity. So if you think of a twenty-year bond, or in this case, twenty-one payments, every one of those payments, principal payments, we call maturity, that carries its own interest rate. So every single one of those is going to have its own interest rate, that's what they're, they're bidding.
I see.
So those components.
Thanks.
Dr. Khan, please.
So, you know, the way the interest rates are going, if three years down the road, the interest is back to, I'm just hypothetically saying, three point five percent. So we, we'll be paying the interest of three point five percent, or right now it's twenty-year, I don't know what is the interest rate, but I think thirty-year is around six point seven, six point eight. So will we be paying that interest rate, or how is it calculated?
So, so what's going to happen is, we will take all those components I just mentioned and, and calculate what we call a true interest cost, and that's how we compare the bidders through their true interest cost. But as you pay off each one of those maturities and you move three or four years down the road, then you're paying the coupon rate or interest rate applied to that maturity and every maturity after that. So it's, it's a cumulative effect. So if you look at the schedule, for example, if you have this in front of you, this is an estimate of what we might see. It's very small print here, but this is what we might estimate the payments to be, it's on the attachment page two. So what we're typically seeing is a five percent coupon rate for the first, say, ten years or so, and then it drops more into the four percent rate, okay? And now, if people say, well, five percent interest rate is kind of high, well, that's not the true interest cost. That is just how it's accrued on each one of those. So what happens is, if, say, your, your interest cost or your market interest rate right now is four percent, and they're saying five percent on the bid, then that extra one percent is generating dollars in a higher price that people are paying to buy that. So if you're an investor and you can buy an investment worth five percent versus four percent, you're going to pay more for that. So that extra amount you're paying over and above the face value or par value goes back to you guys in the form of a premium. That's how the premium is generated, and we anticipate that you will see maybe four million dollars in premium. So you get this four million dollars upfront, okay? And in return, you're going to pay a higher interest rate on those maturities over time. But when we compare them, we take all that into consideration, and that's why it isn't, the winning bid is based on a true interest cost calculation, not necessarily on each interest on the maturity.
You're doing a good job explaining this.
Yeah, well, thanks.
And where does that premium sit then, what happens to that four million dollars?
The premium goes back to the district, and it has to be used to pay interest. So what's going to happen is a certain amount of it will be applied towards your October payment, and then the balance will be applied towards your following April twenty-twenty-six payment. So it's called capitalized interest. When the premium comes in, we capitalize it, put it in the debt service count, and it actually offsets some of your interest accrual for those first two payments.
I have another question, maybe it's tied to this, I don't know. But the, the schedule that we were provided back in May assumed four point seven billion in principal at the first year. And now it's three point two.
Yes.
And with this defeasance, so.
Yes.
Yeah, how did that change and why?
It changed because the first, if, if you're going to have an October payment, the bond attorney is limiting it to the amount of the August tax settlement. They have a calculation to determine if there's any over issuance. So you are not allowed to issue more bonds than what you, you need or you're authorized. So the bond attorney, when we worked with them, they said, well, here is the most that you can pay on your October payment, and that came after those very first schedules that you were talking about. So what we did is we adjusted it based on the over issuance calculation by the bond attorney.
Could you explain the over issuance idea?
Yeah, so when you go out to issue bonds, they, you basically have to issue an amount equivalent or no more than what you need, based on obviously your project, but also based on the cash flow when your tax levies are coming in and so forth. So the bond attorney is going to take a look at that and, and ensure, in order for them to, to issue an opinion that it's a qualified bond, that you have not exceeded your issuance authority or capacity. And they have certain calculations that they run on it. And one of them is if you have an October payment, they limit that payment to, to what your August tax settlement is. So.
So you're saying there's some assumption we wouldn't have funds on hand to pay that?
Well, you, you, you certainly would have funds on hand to pay that, yes.
It's just a requirement that the, the bond attorney has to follow.
It's a legal requirement, yep.
I, I know, so it's there for a reason though, there's some.
Right, right, they consider it an over issuance if, if you establish a maturity hired in your August settlement, because your August settlement is going to be used to pay for, for that October payment. And if you have an October payment that's hired in your August settlement, you're over issuing based on your cash flow for that time period.
Again, it sounds like you don't have the money, it's a cash flow thing.
It, it, well, it is, it's partly cash flow, partly, you know.
I mean, I know we have money elsewhere, but.
And so forth, correct, yes.
It's not in that fund and.
Yes.
So, I, I know, when I'm looking at the school district levy, it says that for twenty-twenty-four, the mil rate was one point eight with the combined, I think, the existing commitments. Then for twenty-twenty-five, it goes to two point six.
That's debt service only.
I move to approve the resolution providing for the sale of not to exceed a hundred forty-five million General Obligation School Facility Improvement Bonds, Series Twenty Twenty Five A.
I second it.
All right, motion is made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Dr. Khan, any further discussion?
I just have one question, so, so we overissued, so we have.
Not overissue, the amount of payment cannot exceed your August settlement. Because we're choosing to pay in October, we're now being tied to the August tax payment coming from the city of Franklin.
Right.
It's a requirement by law, we did not overissue.
I thought it was using his term, so.
Correct, that's what they call it, but it's not, we didn't overissue debt.
Just using his term.
Well, it was an over issuance test, and we had to match that payment to the August settlement, which answers your question, why in earlier versions before we had the August tax settlement number, did it change from that date? So that's why we changed it.
And it results in levy that we can't use to, against this issue?
No, because we'll be answering that in the next segment when we add the defeasance portion.
But we're not defusing the hundred forty-five, we're defusing something else.
Correct. We're using the total levy of about eight million dollars, which is what we've used throughout the entire referendum process. Now, we're only allowed to levy or apply so much of that to the October payment, so we're defusing debt with the remaining portion, which is still in relation to the total overall debt issuance number that we used of eighty-two cents.
But for now, this is just on the bond sale, right?
Correct, correct, I think we need a voice vote.
You ready?
Please.
Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Yank?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Aye.
Dr. Khan?
Aye.
Dr. Beer?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, move on to item E. Move on to item E, resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, the establishment of an escrow account with respect to and the defeasance of certain of the general obligation school building and improvement bonds dated March 15, 2017.
So this is directly tied to our levy in October. So again, we levied about $8 million through the process and with bond attorney. Only $5 point some million can be applied to the actual October payment. So we're moving that to defeasance. It still works within the 82 cent mil rate. Again, as, Mike, you mentioned tonight, it's coming for action tonight. Even though it's the first time we're talking about it, it's in direct relation to the March 14 potential government shutdown. So again, as most of those have gone in the past, they go right up to the wire. I guess there's more speculation at this point that this one will move past March 14. And in order to fit this in, we're looking to, I think it's March 15 or right around that time, we're looking to close on these. Moving that date up because of the state and local government series slugs, they call them, which is what we're going to purchase with the defeasance, which is what we've done the last couple of years. But essentially, you're buying those, putting it in escrow, and when the payments come due, that escrow holder will pay those. But they are off of our books, and they're generating interest over a period of time to help offset the interest that we would have paid on them, which is where we see interest savings in our debt levy. They're earning that because they're placed in the market. But again, it's off of our books once we go through and order those.
Well, that's called a slug, huh? That's interesting.
Slugs, slugs.
They aren't the little things that crawl on the ground.
All right. Please, Linda.
So what's the average interest rate of the ones we are currently carrying or defeating?
If you, you should have a report in front of you. And if you take a look, I'll just go to the summary pages, the last page. You can see the existing or the pre-defeasance. And by the way, you have defeased debt in the past, so this is not new. You can see the remaining principal and interest payments by levy year. So you can see each one of those maturities are carrying a different coupon rate. So what we're going to defease, the middle column shows 1.795 million of the 2035 maturity, which will leave a balance of $2,065,000. And then $1,080,000, which is the remaining amount of your 2036 maturity. Both those carry a 3.5% interest rate. So when you defease it, essentially, take money, put it in escrow, invest in those slugs. That money is sufficient for those payments and the defeased interest, which is the interest calculated against those two maturities. So you can see it adds up to $3,868,000. The savings, because you're paying it off early, removing it from the books, and escrow is paying it off because they're investing and have money to put towards it, is over $1 million. So that's a savings to the taxpayer.
Yes, but the net present value of that savings is how much?
The net present value is probably, well, it's certainly going to be less. And it's.
It's on page eight.
About $50,000. But the net present value is based on an arbitrary number. It is not the true amount reduction in your debt service payment. The true reduction in your debt service payment, which amounts to the true reduction to the levy, is a million. So a net present value is just the calculation. It's not, it doesn't correlate to the amount that the taxpayers will save.
Over, it's, I mean, 2035 is when that principal is due, 2035.
Yeah, but it's paid off on the call date. So it's going to be paid off on April 1, 2026. So you only have an escrow until April 1 of 2026. So it's an efficient use of an escrow. If you were going to set that escrow all the way through 2036, it would not be an efficient use of the escrow. And we would choose different maturities because this one, or maybe a different bond even, because this one would be inefficient and it would lose money. The longer that escrow sits out there, the less efficient this. But because this had an April 1, 2026 call date, that escrow is a very short period of time. So we get the efficiencies out of it.
Do we typically have call dates on these 20-year bonds?
Yes, yes. Now, some of them may have been called. Once you get eight years in, most of them were eight to 10 years. Once you get eight to 10 years in, they could have been called and refunded. So the new bonds or the replacement bonds may not have had a call date, but when they were originally issued, almost all of them have a call date, as will your new bonds.
So we, well, we don't have to do this. This is not a requirement.
You've levied for it, so you have the funds to do it. Do you have to do it? No, there is not any law saying you have to defease debt. However, you've taken that first step and actually accumulated the funds for it. So you'd want to use the funds, and it can only be used for debt.
But we don't have to do it. And I think the schedule, what's our levy next year for debt? Based, I don't have in front of me the schedule, on 145 million. I believe it went up pretty significantly.
It's about an additional $8 million. So our total debt levy will be roughly 12. We currently have about $4 million in principal and interest.
No, I'm talking about the second year on the 145. Do you have, I don't.
They're going to be about $8 million, eight plus.
Yeah, and your total is going to be somewhere around 12 and a half for debt.
I just want to look at the, the schedule. I thought it went up quite a bit in the next year. Do you have a page reference?
The attachment page three on the previous report shows your total columns. And it's the one with the really small print.
Right, so for about 12, it goes to 13 million next year? If we borrow nothing, which we are not going to, so. Is that, am I reading that correct?
Yeah, yes, it is. And it's going up based on estimates of your equalized value, so your mil rate stays the same.
I don't care about the mil rate, sorry.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, the establishment of an escrow account with respect to and the defeasance of certain of the general obligation school building and improvement bonds dated March 15, 2017.
I do have one more question, if you don't mind.
Can I just second?
Sure.
And then I'll second that, and then.
Motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Sapursky. Please, Linda.
So we could hold that, though, in fund balance until next year, potentially.
Your bond attorney would frown on that because you levied for it. So they're, they have a concern. If you're levying for debt, you're supposed to use it, not accumulate it. And so if you talk to your bond attorney, they said, well, then you shouldn't, they would, their answer would be, then you shouldn't have levied for it because you aren't supposed to accumulate it and carry it forward. Plus, you need a bona fide debt service account in order to avoid arbitrage issues. And with a fund balance like that, you no longer have a bona fide debt service account. So you're getting into arbitrage issues if you do not utilize these funds.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we need a voice vote. Or do you have a question? Please.
Mrs. Wachowski?
I'm a no.
Mrs. Yank?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Aye.
Dr. Khan?
Aye.
Dr. Beer?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. New depository, thank you.
6-1, I'm sorry, 6-1, I apologize.
Thank you. I understood for a good bit. You're a good teacher.
New depository for referendum fund administration, Mr. Cromie, please.
So this is just coming tonight for approval. As was mentioned last time, we took a look at four groups. Ultimately, Ellers and Ampersand together provide us the best opportunity for the best interest earnings and the best coverage on arbitrage, which we know we will be in a rebate situation, just given the current yield rates and where arbitrage is set. So again, Ellers having in-house arbitrage that can work hand in hand and be at the table without having to get another vendor at the table was really the key component from my standpoint. And the interest earnings are roughly the same from the four. So looking at who can provide the best service for us was, again, the impetus to choose the partnership.
Thank you. Anybody like to make a motion?
I move to approve the addition of Ellers Investment Partners LLC and Ampersand Inc. to the district's list of approved depositories in accordance with Wisconsin statute 120127.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Yank, seconded by Mrs. Larson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed.
Motion carries, thank you. Competition field turf replacement, Mr. Cromie, again, please.
Yeah, we got a few in a row here. In the fall, there was some undulation notice in the football field. Undulation, kind of some rippling that's happening in the football field. Andy Daniels and the grounds team worked to, I can't even think of what the technical term is, but essentially. Well, you rake, so as you know, the field is filled with tons of infill, right? The rubber pellets and sand. So you rake that, there's a machine rake it around, move it around. The undulation not caused by that. So we had Midwest Turf, who is a local vendor, come out and take a look at the football field to try to provide a determination. They did some testing to the best of their ability. And the reason I say the best of their ability is they're not pulling back the turf. So they're doing their testing above the turf surface. Ultimately, what was determined is that there's some issue with the underlayer, the base surface, from the football field. So there must have been some settlement happening at some point in the underlay. We contacted several turf firms to determine what a potential repair might be to that. So the turf actually still has a year or two of life left in it. There is not a turf firm that will come fix the problem. They do not tear up turf and relay the same turf. That's really the crux of the point that we're at. The reason we're bringing forward a replacement for it is now we know that we have this issue. So once you know something, you have to do something about it. Because we cannot repair it as it is, replacing the turf is our option. So we went to bid. We had onsite meetings. So we developed an RFP, Andy Daniels, Cordell Smith, and I. We had an onsite meeting in early January. Vendors are required to show up to that. Main reason we want them there is so that they can come actually see the site, take a look at, I don't really care about the turfing, but I want them to see the curbing that goes around so that they can plan for any curbing repairs that might have to take place. Typically, there's not on a first replacement. On a second replacement, usually, there's curbing repairs. But typically, not on a first. But again, want the vendors to come out and take a look at that. Vendors were then provided the opportunity to ask us questions. We generate all the questions. We provide the same list of responses to all the vendors, pretty typical in an RFP process. RFPs were due on February 7. We had a RFP opening where we announced who bid and the base bid. So we asked for several components, a base bid. And in working with Cordell, we wanted certain components, so alternating panels. And we looked at a couple of different options for the center of the field, the Sabre, the Franklin F. We looked at some 25-yard lines. We looked at a couple of end zone options. So ultimately, just asking what are these different components that we could slot in once the field is chosen? We asked for a whole bunch of different things as well, references. And do you have a certified turf planner on your staff? And what does your, like, book of business look like? What else have you done, or what else could we take a look at? All of the vendors, I have seen fields for all of the vendors that have supplied bits for us. Andy Daniels has, Cordell Smith has seen them all as well. So kind of have an idea of the quality of what we're going to get, just based on seeing those. Ultimately, we graded all four of the responses independently. And then Cordell, Andy Daniels, and I got together to discuss. We had a really close bid, about a point and a half between sprint turf and field turf. Ultimately, moving forward with sprint turf, they had the highest bid, again, by about a point and a half. They also had a significantly lower cost. All in, we're at about $440,000 with sprint turf. The base bid for the field turf, which was second place, was about $50,000 more. And we still needed, or we still would like to have added a couple of the components, really from a visual aspect of the field. So things like lacrosse lines and soccer lines, and making sure all of those are on there appropriately. So ultimately, we're looking at about $441,000 of cost for the field. We're holding about $22,000, roughly 5% in contingency. That contingency is really going to be used for the base. So are they having to bring in stone? Is there some extra grading that's going to have to happen? And they won't know that till they rip open the turf. So they estimate about where they're going to be. But we're holding contingency to make sure we have enough should some additional supplies be needed in there. And then about $12,000 for a grooming machine. So all different turfs, they all supply their own grooming machine. They all work very similar, but we're holding those dollars until sprint turf can come out and take a look at our machine and make sure that it will work on the turf as it's designed to work. So roughly about $453,000 is really football field and machinery. We're holding an additional $22,000, again, really for that subbase contingency. Contingency is very common on all projects. We're holding contingency for the Cert Building, the 145 million dollar referendum. Part of that is going to be contingency, so it's a very common piece. So ultimately, we're bringing it to you tonight for some information and to answer any questions you have. All of those dollars will come out of Fund 46. It will be on our 10-year capital improvement plan you'll see in May. It is really designed, all of our fields will be on there at some point. They're all going to need to be replaced. They're all large dollar items that typically would chew up a lot of your capital improvement budget in any particular year. And so we do pay for it out of Fund 46 because that gives us time to accumulate the dollars for those.
Before the undulation was observed, where was this item on the 10-year plan?
Really, probably a year from now.
Oh, okay. And pardon my ignorance, when you say turf, is that natural turf, or is it artificial?
So it is artificial. So kind of, one of the questions actually from the vendor was, is there a specific turf you're looking at? And really, Cordell and Andy and I had generated the response of, you know it's going to sit outside in Wisconsin 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. Whatever turf is the best that you have that will be living in weather that's 90 degrees to negative 10 is what we want.
And was there any thought as to, did we do anything to contribute to the undulation? Or was this thought to be strictly due to natural causes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, complete, complete issue. Yeah, typically, what you'll see, like, if it's caused by us, is when things happen a lot in the same spot. So if your offensive line practices in the same spot, like, every practice for years on end, you might see, like, something start to happen in that particular area because it's constantly being pounded on. So like, typically, your teams that practice out in there should be rotating their drills around the field so that they're not wearing it in any particular area. So like, you will see field goals, like, yeah, the kicker probably shouldn't kick extra points 65 times in the same spot. Like, move it around. Your penalty kicks for soccer, like, try to move that around the field so that they're not kicking and planting in the same spot every time. If you go out and take a look at the baseball field and the softball field, like, you will see pitching mounds look terrible after two years on both fields because they are constantly getting pounded. And unfortunately, like, there's not another area. Like, you can practice pitching there, but game time like that is just, is what it is, and it's used every play. So those areas typically get beaten up pretty good, and you buy essentially, like, replacement parts for the fields at those particular times. But like, ideally, you don't want to. But a baseball, softball field, there's no other alternative because it gets hammered so much.
So, sorry, please, Linda.
So what's the expected useful life? Is there warranty on this?
Yep, so we're actually proposing to buy a heavier turf. So they go up to 50 ounce, I believe it is. That'll have a 10-year warranty on it. So the typical field has eight years. It's about $30,000 to buy up to the heavier weight. Again, the heavier weight is safer, has less chance of moving around, plus it adds two years. So we kind of looked at two years of warranty for $30,000 plus a better product. Like, that's a pretty good deal when we're talking a $440,000 product overall.
So we did get our warranty on the existing field?
Yeah, we exceeded its life.
We exceeded its life? And is this price a fixed price, or?
So the contingency should cost any overruns, and we would sign a contract at that, so.
Only the materials that could be needed under, on the.
That's really the outlier in what the contingency is being held for.
And that's kind of whatever they need, they're going to charge you.
Yep, the only other thing we're going to take a look at, and you saw a rendering in there, is I'm going to ask them to generate a rendering with high school boys' lacrosse lines and high school girls' lacrosse lines. So the rendering. so the rendering you have there is a unified lacrosse line. I would say about fifty percent of high schools have unified lacrosse lines, and about fifty percent have the girls' lacrosse lines and the boys' lacrosse lines on there. If we do separate, that will add a slight cost because those pieces have to be generated. A field is probably a little bit more turf than you want to know, but if, when they design the field, they design the green, and the football field lines are the only things that come out of the machine. Everything else is cut into the field and sewn in. So your soccer lines, those are cut out and sewn in. Your, the center, the Franklin saber in the center is cut out and sewn in. So they make that separate, that gets sewn into the project.
Sewn in, you're right, I didn't.
So, that, that would be an additional cost if we end up splitting those lines. And that's just going to come down to, let's see a rendering and see, like, how, like, is it too much on the field from a visual standpoint?
And the edging you said was good?
Yeah, the curbing, I think, is good, they'll rip it up and take a look at it all the way down. Like, we can always see the edging of the curbing, but that curbing goes down probably eighteen to twenty inches into the ground, so we can't see all the way down into that. But assuming cracks typically rise vertically, we should see it on the edge, and we don't see any, or at least any needing of repair.
And else be part of the contingency, I would say?
I don't know if we have curbing contingency in there, but all four bidders have said they don't see any curbing issues.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Timeline and impact to, like, I'm guessing this is done in the summer, is there an impact to, like, our teams and groups using the field for the summer?
So we have put on a target date of July seventeenth for repair, so, or replacement, so starting the day school ends, ideally having it done July seventeenth, so there is some impact to camps and shouldn't be an issue with access to the track. For most of it, there will be time when machinery is coming across the track, we'll not want kids on there, but like, if they're laying the turf, we could have kids on the track yet, but to the actual field, the other's going to be probably a month and a half. That's assuming weather cooperates with us as well. Another little interesting tidbit, they will reuse as much of the infill as they possibly can, so they bring, like, this gigantic vacuum out to suck up the infill. There's a couple other components that were, that were bid on, the, probably the most prominent one is what's called a shock pad. But a shock pad is typically used when you're not going to have enough infill in it, so infill is measured in pounds per square foot, so we've asked for additional infill up to six pounds per square foot, which should match, like, the best concussion protocol you can have on a football field versus paying another hundred fifty thousand dollars for a shock pad, because that additional infill is like five thousand dollars versus the shock pad. And they have a similar, I can't remember what the, it's like a, a Q rating or something like that, but they have a similar Q rating, which is a impact, concussion impact test.
And this is in next year's budget, right?
Well, it's Fund Forty-Six, so we can spend that really at any time.
Going back to the timeline for the summer, will there be a need to, like, move groups off-site to have?
So the only thing I think that's impacted at this time is potentially the football camp, so that, like, if there's a practice that is intended to be on there that we're unaware of, I don't know, but a football camp is scheduled on there, they're planning to move to either one of the grass fields or work on the baseball field.
So you could use other field spaces?
Yeah, for sure, yep, we won't have equipment from the referendum standpoint geared up until probably August, so our field should be up and running by then. So access to all of the grass fields that exist, the turf fields are totally fine. We see lots of teams on those that aren't necessarily playing that sport, but using that field.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? All right, excuse me, item H, policies fifty-three fourteen, medication policies fifty-three fifty, alcohol, tobacco and drug use abuse prevention, intervention and treatment fifty-three fifty-one, school premises or at-school functions. I'm looking for motion.
I move to approve policies, numbers five three one four, five three five zero, and five three five one as presented.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Yank, seconded by Mrs. Larson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries, thank you. State convention reports are included. I don't know if anybody wants to, almost everybody made it down to the state convention. I don't know if anybody wants to report on anything specifically, or if people have read the reports.
Some of them were just added today, I think.
Can I?
Please.
A couple of us attended the presentation about the superintendent evaluation process that we will be using, and so we got some clarification about how that all works, best practices surrounding it, and really, I'm feeling very optimistic that it'll be a good way to sort of capture a true consensus and provide a really professional and actionable report that we could use in an ongoing basis. So I feel good about that and this, working toward that goal.
Yeah, that was really helpful to attend that session and hear, hear and see kind of how it works.
Yep.
One of the districts, yeah.
Linda, please.
I did find it interesting on, this one session I went to on how they had gathered, this was an Amazin area, they gather compensation data, and they shared it so that they could tell what any teacher made within that group. And they have thirty-one districts they started with, now they have sixty. And that's an Amazin area, are you aware, Andy, have any efforts to do that? And, and they share it from, they share it right from their, their payment system, their.
Yep, we're part of that, it's actually the data we used to create the professional compensation model last year, so actually, I was working in it today and have two of our groups done of the four from that particular data, but that's where we pull our data from.
So we're part of this group?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It was, I mean, you kind of wonder if it's, I don't want to say too much information, but they know what everybody makes, very, and it's very current.
So you can find, you can find what everybody makes on DPI, but it's always a years, a year and a rears. This gives us twenty-four, twenty-five data.
Right.
So it's close as we're going to get, if you go on DPI, you'd find twenty-three, twenty-four, and not necessarily in their current district either for every educator in the state.
So it does kind of allow those conversations, if someone comes to you and say, well, I can make more if I go there, they just go check and say, I don't think so.
They can see what other, yeah, what people make in other districts. I like what Andy's saying is we're in that system, so that's how we created the compensation model through the Better Place to Work Task Force last year, so those bands of five years that we talked about are looking at the data that we can pull from that resource for our area, so like, it looks like, or sounds like you heard about Madison's, we're pulling from this area and then looking at the median within there. And then there's some predictability to it, to a degree, right, and adjust, like Andy said, he's in there today, starting to adjust because that data is just beca- beginning to become, come out. So then he can go and adjust those bands for where we at this year, what does that median look like? So we can do the same as last year, first make the median adjustments and then do the additional salary increase or whatever we prove.
And who keeps the data in our group?
Um, that's all kept in HR, so Laura oversees it, but Krista.
I mean, I think the, I don't know.
It was an outside entity that kept.
Oh, you mean the group?
Right, who keeps the group data, someone just got.
Oh, Barrett, Barrett is, yeah, Barrett, there might be another one, but Barrett is the one who we access the data through.
And I did find it interesting, they gave some of the history of what has happened since Act Ten. You know, we kind of had some movement toward performance pay, which didn't seem to work for interesting reasons, and then we've just kind of come back to where we, where before Act Ten in terms of being paid for master's degrees and years of service, it's, I just wonder if, with all that information, how does, it's like you're all acting together? So there's no competition, it's just, again, it's me thinking, I will stop doing that right now.
I think of it as, there's competition on an individual level, right? So any teacher wants to go any, or really, any employee can go anywhere and potentially negotiate a salary, but like, if you think about, could an entire department go do that? Probably not, because the districts don't have enough space for an entire department to come over. So there's competition kind of on the individual level, but holistically, you're looking at, like, are we reasonable as an organization? Or are we competitive as an organization is really the ultimate goal? Because individually, we can't stop anybody from going, but if we're competitive as an organization, that gives us the best chance of maintaining as many people as we possibly can, knowing that is more, it's way more of a free market than it was prior to Act Ten, right? Prior to Act Ten was like, you went and taught at a district, and if you were there for five years, you were there for the rest of your life. And it's just not the case anymore, but if we're competitive holistically, we have the best chance of maintaining as many of our staff on a year-in, year-out basis.
Anybody else? Please, Mary.
Do they include, like, cost of living factors and housing, you know, in certain communities? Because I would think if you want to compare salaries, it would also be.
It's not, but we do not open the pool to the entire state either. So we essentially draw a circle around Franklin, and we use the districts that fit inside that circle, so we'll see an updated version. So what I was working with today, we'll have Wautosa in West Dallas, West Milwaukee, up to West Bend, Elm Brook, I'm trying to think, O'Connell Walk is going to be in there, New Berlin for some positions, so not every school district supplies everything either. But New Berlin's in there for some of our positions, South Milwaukee, Shorewood, so as regional as we can get, would we like to have, like, everybody that neighbors us? Yeah, I think that would be awesome, but unfortunately, they don't have all of their data in there, so you're also subject to that, to who also supplies.
Is it more than last year?
We, yes, last year we had, like, seven districts, I think, and we probably have ten to twelve.
That's good.
Yeah, I can't, I know I don't have them all, and I can't think of them all, but about ten to twelve are in there this year that we would consider regionally close enough that an educator's going to drive to Franklin, but, like, to your point, yep, there's lots of school districts out there, and I don't know if lacrosse is in there, but they just popped in my mind, but like, regionally, lacrosse doesn't make sense for us because a teacher is not going to drive from lacrosse to here every day, so their salary doesn't necessarily make sense to us, and nor would I pick Phillips, Wisconsin, or probably even Belite, I mean, that's a pretty good hike for an educator here, but if we kind of stick to that forty-five to fifty minutes range, that, you know, we do have educators that drive that.
Andy, you have something?
Well, I was kind of going to piggyback onto that with another session that we, some of us attended, you were there with me, and you're talking about, it's more than just salary and, you know, how do you keep an educator more than, you know, just five years, was the managing your self-funded health plan and how that has really worked, it was Greendale presented about that, and I don't, I didn't submit in my report all the various details of exactly the dollar amounts and things like that, but just the improvements that they've been able to make and money they've been able to save with their self-funded health plan, which I know is, you know, kind of ultimately our goal, but also their, their onsite clinic, and I forget the exact numbers, but it was a pretty significant savings that they figured out that people who used their onsite health clinic versus going to see, like, a primary care physician. And the amount of money they saved, which then they were able to put into, you know, other things or whatever, it was just, it was kind of encouraging to see, like, that's what we're moving towards, so.
Yeah, the Rice Lake investing in environmental education, which I won't go into, but the guy from Rice Lake also said a similar statement that their health clinic helped kind of fund their environmental program that they talked about because of this, all the savings.
It's always interesting.
Good convention.
Well, yeah, and good, I just think going to the convention is always kind of helpful and interesting to see what's happening in other parts of the, parts of the state.
Yeah, I do think it's interesting, I, I did, I did go to one financial session, but in that financial session, I was encouraged to go to WASB, and, and they have a series of nine financial things for board members, financial workshops for board members, videos, it's probably three hours total, so it's called Board Finance One-O-One, so I've accessed those and, and watched all of those but the second half of number nine, so I've had to look forward to. I was on a plane last week.
All right.
But also, I do like going to the convention and, and seeing people that you'd see once a year or hear from once in a while, and you get to network a little bit, and just a thank you to administration because it was a lot of people that came up and said, wow, you guys are really doing great. Your, your, your district is doing really great things and leading, so, so thank you for, thank you for that, everyone. Because I heard that several times, and I haven't always heard that, but.
Mary, did you enjoy your general set, your?
I, I'll do it next year. It was, I think I'd feel more comfortable, you know, maybe saying something, but it surprised me how people said the same thing over and over and over.
Yeah.
And I was like, I don't know, just surprised that, that people felt compelled to make the same points over and over and over and over when saying it once would have sufficed. I think we could have dug a little deeper into things if we weren't. Anyway, it was fun.
And when I was attending some sessions, one of the board members was sitting next to me, we, we basically, we had to kind of talk between different groups, you know, and we're just talking about that, I don't want to name the district, but she said that it's difficult for them to find board members who want to represent in the board. When I told them that, you know, we have a very engaged community, actually, we have primaries, she was amazed by that. She said, what, you have primary for school board? I said, yes, we have a very engaged community, and then, you know, and then she said, she, and I told her about Debbie that how long she has been there on our, on our board, so she said, well, you guys definitely have a very dedicated community members and a very invested community, I said, so that was very nice to hear that, because in other school districts, they don't even have people who want to be on the school boards anymore. So, thank you, everyone.
All right, item J, legislative advocacy letter. Mrs. Bennett, please.
Yeah, so Andy had started a draft of a legislative letter, and then we really dove into it and added some more data and, and then thought it would be a good idea to bring it to the board, since a lot of discussion in the last couple of months, I don't remember if it was December or January anymore, it was around board interest and a goal that was working to advocate with our local legislators and joint finance. So we thought, in the past, Andy's written a letter, and that this could be an approach where we all work together to write it and could sign on to it and be a part of the day in Madison and deliver, and then also get to the joint finance committee as a whole. So we wanted to bring it, look at, and see if there's anything needs adjusting, or if everybody's on board, we'd be great to get a signed copy. If everybody wants to sign it, that'd be great, and then we can get that set out to our crews. Or we can adjust accordingly, we just tried to get a draft of what seemed to be the things that we're hearing about. So we really looked at the high academic achievement of our district, and then dove into the CTE, DPI, and the state definitely has an interest in CTE and growing those programs across the state right now, so trying to drive home that we have programs that are flourishing, but that there's needs there to continue to fund them and to grow them. Then we went into the high-quality educators it takes, so you can't grow those programs or have them if we don't have high-quality educators in those seats and the support staff to, to help them through that, so really went into that. That's where I pulled in a lot of data, so my dissertation is around retention and what's keeping people in education. So had a lot of pertinent and current data, a lot of it comes from DPI and some from Hanover to get more of a national perspective on just the turnover that is happening in education, the importance to keeping the educators we have, to continuing to promote the career field, and then also the costs that it has to districts when we do have turnover. And then went into special, special education funding, because we feel like that's a lever that we could put some, some pull on, if we can start to get the state to talk about how we're going to better fund that. So Andy really pulled together the numbers of how much it's costing us out of our Fund Ten balance to transfer to our special ed funds every year and how that's been increasing in those costs, so that reduces obviously then the amounts we have in Fund Ten to support in other areas or to look at our compensation model and other things that we've been talking about where we're trying to improve. So pulling that all together with the, the ultimate ask to the budget committee, and I'm sorry, for, to joint finance to look at a higher increase for special education funding, because that will support our budget overall, will mean less transfer from Fund Ten, and allow us to support our programs and our staff differently. Tried to go through all the talking points, but those are the big pieces that we kind of looked at with it. Tried to, uh, go through all the talking points, but those are the big pieces that we kind of looked at with it.
Linda, please.
Well, I think, um, Angie, you can jump in here, but the, the focus is really special ed funding. Is that really the focus of what the, uh?
Do you mean for SWSA?
Yeah.
There is a focus, uh, the, this, this dovetails perfectly with what SWSA is doing with the addition of our, the addition of sort of our brags about our CTE programs. So it's sort of a dual thing about the teacher pipeline and special ed funding. So I think this would, would be.
It's in line.
Correct.
I guess, I guess when I read it though, when you open with that full page of the CTE as a legislator, I, you know, I think they kind of, I kind of would maybe flip that and go with the hard ask of the special ed first. I would just leave with the stuff at the back because teacher pipeline is really critical. So is the, uh, um, special ed, because that really can change, change our fiscal environment. And, um, and the, it's a great list, but I don't know if it adds to the, uh, the push for the, the, I mean, I think also, uh, and the, the idea is you can't be, have too many things in the conversation. You want to be more focused because they don't, when they're a legislator, they want to focus on the main things. So this get, could get to be a little bit more.
Sort of along those lines, I, I would suspect that if they're going to take the time to really read this closely, they're actually going to give it to a staffer to read and draw the, the highlight points, um, out of it. But I, I would think, because there's, um, good use of bolding, but I guess I would maybe bold the specific asks. I had to do a bit of searching to find what we are actually asking for. And it's that we respectfully request the state. Um, so I guess that would be my only, my only feedback. It's a, it's a lot of information, but.
I also think, uh, Dr. Mull's name should be on here as well.
Yeah.
Because you are a person with classes and educating kids. So I think her name needs to be on here, absolutely. He'd be happy to act.
I just, Linda, you bring up a really good point. So I've been part of SAA Schools Administrators Alliance for like eight years and used to go to these meetings and they would bring up, like, oh, we would like funding for this and like funding for this. And they'd list like these sixty-five things that they'd want funding for. And like, I, myself and the Wasmaw Group worked for years, so like, could we get it down to like two or three things? Because the pot of money is exactly the same. If you slice it sixty-five ways, that's just a whole lot harder for districts in general to spend it. But if you slice it in terms of special ed and categorical aid or revenue limit or something like that and give these bigger pots of money, then districts can spend it on where they need it in any particular year or so. Like that idea of, like, let's just ask for a couple of buckets and fit everything into it is a really strong move that we've actually made really good headway on from all of the group's superintendents, business managers and school boards and thinking large dollar, or large buckets versus these isolated things that make it really hard to actually spend the dollars because you might not have anything that fits in that bucket.
But it does seem like the one ask out of this is special ed funding. Is, is that fair? Yeah, so maybe even you, you could do the old three par- five paragraph essay approach and sort of open with, here's what we're asking for. Put all the, and this is, this is just wordsmithing, so feel free to take it or leave it. Because the, the content is good. And then put the final ask again. I don't know. Just to make it clear, if you're only gonna take away one thing, this is the thing.
And I did like the close with educations and one experience, every person in Wisconsin, so you're, again, you're drawing them in.
No, it's very well-written.
It's just I get lost when I was reading all this. Somewhere is gonna get good.
Well, I knew this was a letter to the legislature. I, it was.
Because you already knew all the great stuff, right? We're just trying to build the story for everybody else.
I am familiar with this, yes.
I am familiar with many of these things, so.
I actually think, I mean, have you, have you read any bills lately? Like, this is so much more exciting than a bill.
Cell phone use in the classroom? What's wrong with that?
No, I mean, I'm just like, yes, it's a long letter, but there's a lot of information and I think it's more exciting than the things that they're usually reading. So I feel like they'd be like, woo, Franklin, let's go.
So what I'm hearing is move the ask to the top half, um, and just bold that and bold maybe the thank you statement. Take the other bolds out so that we're really like clear in that. And then maybe shift the CTE part after the special ed numbers and things. So do the ask, do the special ed, do the teacher retention first, then do the special ed numbers.
And leave with the feel-good. Leave with the feel-good. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, and that's true, because then at the end, you do invite them to come stop by Franklin anytime.
Yeah, come by at any time.
And perhaps one of the, um, things that would draw them would be one of these CTE events, so, yeah, that's, I think it works.
Because we're asking for funds, we can add more money.
More money.
What is your timeline for wanting to?
That's right, Mo.
I mean, I have the name too. I gotta kind of go with that.
Like, are you guys bringing this on the twelfth when you go to the day of the Capitol or are you trying to send it before that?
Probably, my thought would be, you know, open to anything, is send it ahead and then also take it with us that day and get the hand delivery of it. And hopefully be able to put a little voice to the story because you're trying to tell a story with it so they understand. So, yeah, send it to Joint Finance and our local.
Would it be okay if, like, we held it at the front desk and if we could pop in and sign it or?
Yeah, that was why I was asking was like, if you need to have it sent, you know, if we're not all signing it tonight because it's gonna get edited, when do you want us to come in?
Yeah, let's do that. I can adjust it tomorrow and then have it available starting Friday at the front desk. So just stop in whenever it works to sign it. Does that work? I was trying to adjust it as we spoke, but now I feel like if I move chunks, I'm afraid I'm gonna lose something. We can come visit right after the meeting if some people want to sign.
Very well-written. There weren't any dangling participles.
Wouldn't want those. Thank you for putting it together.
All right, thank you. Uh, School Board Liaison Reports, um, Board Liaison Reports, does anybody?
I met with Ms. Sessing, obviously, um, in advance of this. And all forty of the kids on the school, uh, Student Council wanted to come and present. She had to draw names out of a hat because those kids are, they are on fire. They practiced that presentation, I think, at least three or four times.
They did a very good job.
Yeah. Yeah, and her, um, academic goals, she's already, she's already meeting them from winter assessments. Um, and so in terms of like that literacy stuff, it really made me excited and happy to see, so.
I'm not sure it's a liaison that I, in my role as liaison, but I went to the Savis, um.
Oh, you did.
With Linda, and then I went to the vaping one and, um, just absorbed a whole lot of information. And I, I know people, especially Andy Daniels, God bless him, you know, spent so much time putting these together. And I just wish there was more pa- more attendance, I think, at, at these, at these functions because they are incredible.
Vaping attendance.
Um, same as the Savis one, probably ten people.
It's been tough. Like, we're gonna just try to think a different way. There's a lot of effort by a lot of people on the team. And I'd say those are our two highest attendance. Savis was the highest. Indian School one earlier this year was higher, but that was joint with them, so our population there wasn't as big.
Even that was pretty.
That was like about a handful or so, I think you said.
Still felt like that was, you were there, right, Linda?
Right.
A little bit lower than I was expecting, I guess.
But there were some good comments by parents. It was interesting to hear their comments.
Yeah, one, one parent who I think has a, she had a law enforcement background with the vaping. She said, I wish there was more to prepare fifth graders for, for the, maybe somewhat overwhelming, you know, amount of things they're gonna be exposed to in a neg- in a negative way, unfortunately, um, at the middle school. She said her son was kind of trepidatious about all the things he might get exposed to. And of course, and her in law enforcement probably maybe has shared things. So I don't know what we do for fifth graders to kind of prepare them for the onslaught of the things they might be exposed to.
I do appreciate that we've put this series together and certainly it's the first year and people are kind of figuring it out. And maybe, you know, now that it's been out, people will come to more things next year. I don't know how, how you go about doing it, but I think it's valuable to have, valuable information for parents to have. I would have appreciated a lot of this when my kids were younger, so I think it's great to keep trying. Not sure how to reach people any differently.
I wonder if there's, would be any value in having the series sort of rotate between elementary schools and having, did you, okay, having sort of a. This one's hosted by the Southwood Glen PTA, you know?
Yeah, something along those lines, or even if it's, uh, it's more, it was a lot of district led on this one, right? And so I think, we talked about that, Countrydale did a literacy thing really early in the school year and they just, it was all on their own. You know, like they did it on their own. So we talked about like, how do we support buildings, uh, to run them out of their own building? Because I think we'll get better, because they had an outstanding turnout at that event, but it was just for their Countrydale families, right? So, yeah, that's, that's a good point because that's what Dr. Mull and I talked about, following the Savis one, actually. And maybe not needing, um, we're trying to do one a month and that was probably really robust to start out with. And so families are super busy, so maybe quarterly, um, is good too. And especially as you start stretching out the content, you can kind of get a rotation. Parents learn about vaping every other year and we get a rotation to it. We can get a pretty good language and understanding across the community.
Well, and having dates, if you could have it, like with your back-to-school stuff, like, hey, the, the quarterly things this year are gonna be on these dates and you know about it, you can.
Yeah, we hit it by semester this year and it was like, we had it drafted out because the goal was like a beautiful one-pager that we could do exactly like you're saying. So it's definitely something we're hoping to attain next year. We just didn't have all the dates set yet.
But just, you know, if somebody puts it on their calendar in August as they look at their March calendar, it's like, oh, yeah, that's, you know, this thing is happening and you might plan your life around it a little bit more than, you know, just shorter notice. I don't know.
Are PTAs well-attended those meetings? Does everybody? Varies by school, but I think there's a little bit more of that sense of hometown pride when it's your PTA.
Definitely more at elementary than middle or high. High is not, and middle.
Middle school's not very good either.
Elementary thing, or seems to be in terms of people going to the meetings.
All right, School and Community Engagement Reports.
Had a little group hang at the multicultural Fest. That was, that was a good one. Ran into several of you there. That thing, talk about home, homegrown pride, that, that thing has taken on a life.
My gosh, uh, yeah. I, I, I barely got a parking place. And when I was leaving, I had somebody follow me through the parking lot to my car to get my parking place. It was, it was the place to be on Friday night.
Night was amazing. I think the food was amazing, the people was amazing. And to a surprise, when I was, uh, when I was walking in, I saw a truck and I was thinking that he's selling it. I said, oh, you know, and then I realized that the Milton Depp, it's a place on Seventy-Sixth and Layton, next to Panera. I happened to go a few times and I said, and actually he was giving it for free.
He was giving away food from a food truck.
I stood outside in the cold.
The chocolate, the, the chocolate crepes.
Oh, it was free?
Oh, my God, it was free.
It was free. When the kids found out, it was free.
It was free and there was such a big line outside there when I was walking.
I really sold a bunch.
That each grape is almost fifteen dollars and he was giving it for free.
I've never been there, but now I'm going to have to try.
It is amazing.
This melted chocolate and carb sensation.
Such, such a nice, yeah, I mean, yummy chocolate, but it was very nice of him to kind of stand out there, especially with the snow and all this stuff.
A parent or?
He's a, I think he's a parent and, um, uh, I know he's Palestinian and they, they opened it, I think, two years ago. But that place is always full and it found it. But you know, his generosity really touched me that, you know, fifteen, because when you go in there, when I go with me and my wife and go for a date or something like that and you know, it's, it's, you easily pay thirty, forty, fifty dollars for that, you know?
And you know what? She's worth it.
Oh, yeah, more than that.
Well, so.
But it, it was definitely, it was very generous to see a community member, you know, come and just give it to. I think when the students figured that out, it was a big.
And it was cold.
Yeah, it was cold.
Yeah.
Yeah, of course, Annalee mentioned before that we went to, or they, we had the, uh, completion ribbon cutting of the, of the home built. Anne and Mary and I were there. Uh, the mayor and councilwoman, uh, Eichman showed up as well. It's, it's a great, it's a great day when that happens because shoulders are back and they're so, they're so proud of what they've done.
Those kids are so proud. They were.
I saw the pictures.
Yeah.
So definitely more females on the.
Yeah, it was a split six-on-six.
It was six, uh, six out of half of them.
Wow.
Maybe three years ago, I don't think there was any. I think it last year was the first year, yeah. Decorating, right? I'm just kidding.
No, actually, I asked, um.
Oh, did you ask?
I asked, I, I've talked to a bunch of the kids there and almost all of them said their favorite part actually was the framing. And, um, one girl in particular, she said, you know, I do rock climbing and it was kind of similar to that. I got to put on the same harness, because I said, were you scared? And she goes, no, I, I do rock climbing. I put on the harness and was up there and it was, that was one of those things where you could, like, literally, there was not a roof there. They framed it all up and then there was a roof, like very tangible things to see.
It was neat. I was, happened to be there one day when they were putting one of the students up, like harnessing them and it's, it is neat. Like, I mean, that really brings, brings it all to life, right? And they're feeling what it is to be a little bit suspended, right? And the magnitude of the work that they're doing.
Yeah, it's, it's just a great program and we're really lucky to have that partnership with Tim O'Brien and the leadership of Mr. Minty, so.
I think also it gives you good skills because even, to be honest, you know, it's so expensive to call a plumber electrician or simple, you know? Like a plumber itself, if you call a plumber, you know, they'll cost you three hundred dollars, four hundred dollars, and if you can fix it. And when I talk to my coworkers, some of them are pretty females, very pro, you know, they can do the tiles, they can do the whole kitchen. So kudos to anyone who has the skills and the time to get it done, man. Saves a lot of money.
All right, uh, Future Agenda Items, Franklin High School Presentation, Summer/Fall 2025, Early College Credit and Start College Now Request Approvals. Communications Update, Award of, Award the Sale of Bonds. Board Clerks Report, Election Notice and Notice of Ballot Positions and District Administrator Self-Evaluation of Goals. Uh, closed session. I'm looking for a motion.
Questions? When is the next Forward Franklin, uh, update?
Uh, April ninth.
April ninth.
Right around the, around that meeting is. Yep. April ninth.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Larson, seconded by Mrs. Wachowski. All in favor? Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. We are adjourned at eight oh eight. Thank you, everyone.